Posted on September 1st, 2023. Mr. Alexander, will you lead us in our pledge? Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mrs. Porter, will you call the roll?
President.
President.
Here. We'll now move to our public segment. I know Ms. Poplin is here and I saw you just walked in under the wire. So, Ms. Poplin, please.
Okay, what I want to talk about in the papers that y'all were handed is the front cover of the memorial folder for Melody Gage. I want to talk about, there's no programs, there's no classes, there's no books, there's no NA, there's no AA. So, she come from the street, arrested in a vehicle, and she went into a jail. She had drugs on her, she got in the jail, she got more drugs. It's the jail that I like to call Oklahoma County Detention Center South, Clayton County. So then, she gets released from there and comes to Oklahoma County where she's getting even more drugs in the facility. And she got OR'd out of there. And not long after that, as you can see, she's deceased. And I knew this young lady, I've known her for years. Brandy knows her, from Clayton County, correct? She knows her, she's beautiful, 29 years old, and left behind a little boy. So I would appreciate it if somehow, some way, we all can pull together and put together some programs, a classes, NA or AA, something, instead of just locking them in a cell and leaving them there and let the bugs eat away at them until they're mentally crazy. There was one young lady that come in there, and I'd like to know how this happened. She got in with heroin and fentanyl to succeed. Two girls overdosed, two more overdosed, another one overdosed, and she took her hair and went in fentanyl she still had left over, back out the jail with her when she got released. How did that happen if your scanner is working? How does she get in there with those drugs? And it's sad, this girl, Melody Gage, was only 29 years old. She had her whole life ahead of her. And if there wasn't drugs in the facilities, and I'm not just saying Oklahoma County because they're everywhere. They're even on the prison yards. But if there was some help for them, we gotta figure out how to get them help to get them off the drugs. Thanks.
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, one of the things that's a reoccurring theme as a problem in our detention center is staff, right? Staff retention, you know, keeping people. And I hear it's job fair, some of the people can't pass inspections. We're still below, I think, maybe what, 30, 40 people, I might be off. But we need people, right, to run the facility. And it doesn't seem like what we're doing is working. And the one thing I know is that when you continue to do something and it does not achieve results, you gotta kind of shift, you gotta pivot, you gotta find another way to get around the obstacle, right? One of the things that has been brought up before is activating reserved deputies. Now, I know you guys don't want the sheriff in charge. I don't know why, but, you know, we've got opportunity, we got trained people here, right? We hear we need to bring in more people, but they still have to go to the academy, they still have to do this, yada, 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 right? It's gonna take time. We don't have the time, we need people right now, you know? So, if you've got a surplus of folks, that could work. Come on, come together, make this happen to where we could save lives, money, so on and so forth. It can happen, we put a man on the moon, we can do this, okay? We have to look at evidence, and she mentioned about the drugs, okay? I don't know why, either consistently or ever, we're not searching the staff. Anybody who ever researches any facility, like a jail or something that has drugs getting through it, the staff is bringing it in, right? One or two people is all it takes, it's not everybody, but it's one or two people. You start, right, you start searching people. If we're not gonna do it, then are you able to post people out there? Before they get on shift, you search them. Because a new building, like Trump's new wall, is not gonna solve this. It's people, policies and procedures, and accountability that's gonna solve the overwhelming majority of these issues. And if it's drugs coming in and filth, that requires cleaning up. Building doesn't grab soap and start cleaning itself. It requires people to do something, right? So if we're really serious about this issue, ending the drug, this is a horrible... I'm a mental health counselor, I have a lot of clients that are addicts, that are recovering. It is a serious issue, okay? But in reality, there's somebody making money off of this. Right? There's staff, there may be even leadership, I don't know, but somebody is getting a kickback. It's how it is. So we gotta be serious about this, we have to start searching these people, get some more people to work in there we can get right now.
Approval of the minutes, please. Discussion, possible actions, our last minutes of August 7th, 2023. Any comment, corrections, additions? Motion to approve, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Mrs. Porter, will you call the roll? Please vote electronically.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next on the agenda is invoices and claims for September 5th, 2023. Any discussion? Have you had time to review? Invoices, claims, payroll?
Motion to approve claims.
Motion is moved to approve, is there a second? Have a second, Mr. Alexander, thank you. Call the roll, please, Mrs. Porter, yes, and vote electronically, thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number three is the report from Chief Executive Officer Brandy Garner. Mrs. Garner, you are on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So my presentation today isn't gonna be as long as the ones that have been previous because I have people here today that are going to present certain items to you. I'm just gonna give a brief update on our employment stats, give you some operational updates and some statistics. We're currently at 266 employees. We're gonna have onsite hiring event at the end of this month. Originally, we slated, we were slated to have one at the end of August, but there were a lot of things happening, changes that were going on with our training division that made it a little difficult. Our next academy is October 2nd, and that will be a four-week academy versus the two-week academy that we have been doing. We want to incorporate more reality-based training and hands-on scenarios with our new cadets to better prepare them for the difficult job that they have. That next academy will have 14 total, seven officers that are coming on as detention officers. But keep in mind, previously, I had talked about all people that are being hired will go through an academy. So even clerks will be going through the full academy, and we're gonna reclassify those positions as detention support officers or DSOs. Just left some of the training division changes up there, nothing that I just didn't cover. This is just a breakdown of our employees. As you can see, 23% are male officers, 23% are female officers. We have 42% of female civilians or clerks. We've had quite a few that have agreed to go through the academy so they can better support our detention staff. And then we have 12% of males are civilians. And then just some generational breakdowns, obviously millennials and Generation X, that makes up the bulk of our employees. And I'm gonna cover a lot on this slide. It's just things that have been going on that I think is important for you to know. As far as the new mattresses go, we're almost finished deploying them. We've purchased 1,725 so far. We have 400 remaining that will be delivered hopefully by the end of October. That leaves the 10th floor and then partial of the 12th floor. We have also posted the job for the certified pest applicator position. We'll begin doing the interviews soon, and this is part of our bed bug abatement. That's a common complaint, and I think it's just better to have somebody there full-time on staff that can take care of issues immediately versus waiting for somebody to come out or using another chemical. We are still working on pay increases. I know that's something that's been on the agenda for months and months. And with our new CFO, I think that we're gonna be able to come up with a pretty decent proposal next month. Training division, as I mentioned anyway, or as I mentioned earlier, the first academy was a success. The next academy will be four weeks long, and it's gonna have more reality-based training. We did hire two key positions. Chris Sherman is our new chief financial officer, and Michelle Gossett is my executive assistant. Also, we're gonna have a presentation later covering the cell renovations. And this is part of the bed bug issue, trying to resolve that as well as some of the health department issues with cleanliness and sanitation of the cells. So during the month of August, we identified 34 people that might qualify for medical OR based on chronic or acute healthcare needs. 21 of those still remain in custody, and there's a host of reasons why. You see people have out-of-county holes, and they have very high bonds. Some have high violent charges or domestic violence charges. We do have one that is set at a $5,000 bond, and that's a recent request, and so I'm sure it's still under review. We do have four of them that are charged with an offense of a sexual nature. We were able to get 13 released. This is just an age classification of our current population. Most of the people in our custody fall between 30 and 39 years old. So this month, our head count was climbing, and that's pretty typical. You'll see that in the summer months as it heats up, for whatever reason, crime increases. And so our numbers have increased by quite a bit. It's still a little bit lower than what it was before last year. And then this just shows you the increase in some of our numbers. The mental health observation particularly is climbing, but that can also be due to our population climbing. The vast majority of people that come into our facility have some type of mental health issue. Our DOC numbers, they're pretty steady. They declined a little bit, but it looks like they're trending upward now. Total hug count as of this morning was 1,579. That's about 20 less than what we had this time last year. 87% of our population is male. And there's some other statistics there. 211 are currently sentenced to DOC. We have 73 that are self-reporting as homeless, 38 that are self-reporting as veteran. And we know all of those numbers are gonna be a lot lower. And then the arresting agency information. Oklahoma City Police Department has brought in about 57% of our current population, followed by Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, then Midwest City, and then so on and so forth. We have 317 people in custody right now that have a bond of $10,000 or less. Overall, since July of 2020, our population is still trending downward. And then there's some other data on there. 128.3 days is the average days that somebody has been detained. Anybody that's held over a year, their average, there's 144 people that have been there over a year. And then just over 1,000 have been held, are being held pre-trial. And that is my update. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions, comments? If not, thank you, Mrs. Garner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Move on to item four, receive, accept, and discuss the report by our new chief financial officer, Chris Sherman. Welcome. Give us some good news, please.
Well, let's just start with the news. No, just to give you a little bit about my background. I came from the banking business, was there for 12 years, and then went into state government for 13 at a couple of different agencies. And in between that time, also ran a credit union. So I have a little bit of experience in especially state finance and that area. And after being there for only a couple of weeks, one thing I can tell you is that it's... There's nothing nefarious going on, it's more a big lack of financial controls and policies and procedures that just either didn't exist or haven't existed for a while. So everybody kind of follows their own thing, and a lot of that is also communication. You know, we have five or six people ordering things when it should be maybe one or two ordering things, and they don't have segregated budgets so that we know if we have to buy a certain amount of product for the jail for the year, we're not waiting till the middle of the year and saying, oh wait, we forgot, we have to order new mattresses for everybody. Well, we're not gonna operate like that anymore, we're gonna get ahead of those things. One of the things that we are going to do and I've engaged with our CPA is to have an audited financial statement monthly. Now, I'm gonna, we're trying to figure out what that's gonna look like depending on when the meetings hit because there's gonna be times when those meetings hit that I don't know that they'll have time to get that audited and back to us in time for the meeting. But we're gonna work through those issues. I will say that, you know, the staff's done a great job, you know, getting things done and keeping the lights paid, the lights on, and everybody's paid. So, you know, I commend them for, especially see for how he stepped up in this time for the jail. So I don't know if you want to go over the numbers, if you all had an opportunity to look at those. Let's see, sorry. So you can see our revenue, the total revenue for July was 3.1 million. The total expenses overall were 1.6 million, which left at the end of the month, the total of $128,223 to the good. Now, the current cash on hand right now that we have available is $1,649,675. Does anybody have any questions about the numbers or myself?
Any questions, comments? Mr. Sherman, I noticed on the procurements, Amazon. Have we been ordering supplies from Amazon? Those supplies are not available locally?
We get a much better, especially when we're buying in bulk, we get a much better deal through Amazon.
Fair enough, I just am asking the question.
And I asked that as well, and we went through everything, and it's specifically just to save money.
That's good enough for me, as long as we have eyes checking on everything. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the report and the financials?
Motion to accept.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept. And a second, please call the roll, Mrs. Porter, and a vote electronically.
Yes.
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 Yes, please, thank you. Next item is the report from our man Jeff Alma, our man Jeff IT. Give us an update on your progress.
Good afternoon.
Emphasis on progress.
Sure, so that's what I'm here to do, just a quick update on how we're doing with our network infrastructure upgrade project. So I'll be giving a quick update on email, Wi-Fi, the network infrastructure, and the mobile devices projects. For the email project, all users have had a new email address created on our domain. They'll have to notify contacts, and like anything that they're subscribed to, they're gonna have to update their subscription to their new emails. There's gonna be a little bit of a transition, but as of right now, everything is up and live. They've been logged into it, and we've uninstalled the old version of Microsoft Office and installed the latest version on all of our desktops. For the Wi-Fi, we've installed six access points on the current network infrastructure so we can allow for testing for the mobile devices. The remainder of the wireless project will be dependent on installing the new infrastructure because that will expand our port capacity, which right now we're pretty much capped out on. So for the network infrastructure, everything's been delivered except for the main server rack and UPS, which that's scheduled to arrive by the 25th, which time they will commence the installation of all the server and network infrastructure hardware. Currently, we're in planning and design meetings, and we've got a walkthrough within the next week or two just to get a site survey and get everything prepared and ready to go for when everything finally arrives. For mobile devices, we're currently in design and configuration stage. We've ordered QR placards and mobile devices. As soon as we get the system configured to our specifications, we'll do testing on it, which we've begun. Go live in operational meetings, which that's where we're going over how do we want it configured and laid out. And then we'll relay that to the vendor, and then they'll configure the system, and then we'll be ready to go. Timelines, email, I'm calling that completed, even though, like I said, we've still got a little bit of transition to get everything, all the contacts updated. Wi-Fi, I expect to be completed on Halloween, and same for the network infrastructure. And then that gives us about another 10 days to finish the mobile device project.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Alma, can you expand on the mobile devices? What is that?
Sure, so we'll be, it's just an iPhone that will be connected, it's not on service, it'll be on Wi-Fi. And then there's a mobile application that connects to jail tracker that we'll use to, we can issue food, meds. We can track, we can do facial recognition to track, make sure everyone's in the correct cell at the correct time. We'll be able to do site checks with it. Basically, everything that we log in a logbook will be able to log on this device. No more paper. Exactly.
That's a blessing, and it's immediate.
Yes.
Are you happy with your vendor?
Yes.
Okay, just asking. Don't want anything to bite us in the fanny.
No.
Especially since the deadlines two months from now, right? Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Jeff, appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Very much so. Next, we have Sergeant Locke and Ronnie Aldridge, Health, Fire and Safety.
Good afternoon.
Sales, thank you.
I'm gonna do a brief presentation on the cell renovation project that me and Ronnie and Sergeant Burke have been involved in. So what we're doing is we're sealing the outside of the walls that get moisture on them with a moisture barrier paint. We're painting all the rest of the walls with urethane enamel paint, which is easier to clean. The floors are gonna be painted along with the bunks. This also addresses many of the health department deficiencies that we have. Sanitation was a big one. The project per pod is estimated between three and four weeks. All the work is done in-house and with the help of the Shine Project, which I'd like to thank Commissioner Armon and the Shine Project for helping. This also increases the foot candles, the lighting. It was reading at about 28. After the cell was finished, it reads right around 100. So it brightens up quite a bit. And this also is gonna improve morale of individuals that are housed. This is a picture of the before and after. The walls and the ceiling were painted. And then once again, you have another picture, and then the completed cell on your right. And then those are the new mats that they discussed earlier. Also, the day room of the pod is getting renovated also, new paint and everything. You can see that the ceiling versus the new painted ceiling. And then inside and outside of the doors are also getting painted. Questions?
Any questions or comments?
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Johnson, please.
I just had to talk to the tour of the jail, and the pictures don't do it justice. It's an amazing job that Sergeant Locke and the people that helped her did, seeing the difference between before and after. So they just did a fantastic job.
Am I correct in viewing the pictures that you're not only painting the ceilings, but you're painting the floors as well?
Correct.
Good. Any other comments, questions?
One, Mr. Chairman, this, the way I understand this paint is it also addressed the bed bug issue with them going in and out of the walls, correct?
So with it being a urethane enamel paint, it's a lot thicker than your latex paint. So it's gonna like seal up all the little holes and crevices that they have, which houses the bed bugs.
Anything else? Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Next, we have a discussion, I believe. Mrs. Garner, you're up to talk about our plan for Narcan.
So I don't have a presentation for this, but I just wanted everybody's approval before I move forward because it is a little bit controversial. However, it's listed as a best practice by the NCCHC. It's something that has the blessing from the Department of Mental Health, and Turnkey is on board with it as well. So in thinking about the drug overdoses that we have and the fact that fentanyl is very... So in thinking about the drug overdoses that we have, and the fact that fentanyl is very difficult to detect, and it's coming in a lot of times through the mail, one of the things that we would like to do is deploy Narcan throughout the facility. The National Commission on Correctional Healthcare says that it should be available to every person in the facility, staff, vendors, and even inmates. This is something that I want to do. I think it's a little groundbreaking, it's a little edgy, but it's something that has proven to save lives in jails in California, and it's something that I think that we need to do. We've already secured the Narcan enough to issue to every single person in our facility through the Department of Mental Health, they're supportive of this, and we have Shred the Stigma, which is a nonprofit organization that works under the umbrella of the Department of Mental Health, that will come in and educate our population not only on opioids and opioid addiction, but recognizing the signs of overdose and how to administer Narcan. There will be some policies and procedures in place that we're going to have to work on internally related to what do we do if we go and respond to a drug overdose and somebody has deployed Narcan? What does that mean? We don't want somebody to fear letting us know that they've overdosed, because if you know anything about Narcan, you can give one dose, but that doesn't mean that the overdose is over. Sometimes people need multiple doses of Narcan, and the idea is harm reduction, reducing the number of overdoses that we have, the number of deadly overdoses we have, and the number of overdoses we have that create lifelong problems. So I'm asking for the trust approval to do this moving forward.
Any questions or comments about this new program?
Is the opposition, the belief that by providing Narcan, you're encouraging the use of drugs?
I haven't really heard a lot of opposition, but I can imagine that it is coming. And my belief is, you know, we have to recognize the fact that fentanyl is a problem here and on the streets, it's a problem everywhere. And, you know, look at the Department of Mental Health, they have Narcan vending machines and drug testing kits out on the streets now. They're issuing Narcan to our law enforcement partners so they can give it to people, even if there's no criminal charges, if they walk into a house and they recognize the signs of drugs, they're giving Narcan out to these people. It's about harm reduction, truly.
Mr. Chairman, we had the training at Rosemont College, and we were issued, I have it in my office, so if there's a problem, I can run, you know, 20 feet from the classroom, my office to get Narcan and administer it. So we had that training, it was issued to faculty there, so.
Is this only going to be issued to the staff, or this is just going to be in the pod?
We're issuing, we've already been issuing it to our staff, which has helped a great deal with the overdoses that we have had. I'm talking about issuing it to the inmates themselves.
I just guess the only thing that I think about is, you know, what could, it's not the Narcan itself, because being used, obviously it's effective, it's, you know, the packaging and everything else that comes with it. What can someone who's exercised an ingenuity with all this time say, hey, can I use for this, this, this? Just thinking about those, about those things that come along with it. But outside of using it to save lives, I think that's, I think it's a perfect use, but.
Yeah, so we have already completely destroyed a Narcan, a used Narcan kit, just to see what instruments could be made out of it. The only thing is a tiny little metal rod where it's a tube that they can't do a whole lot with. I mean, they're getting contraband from the facility itself, that's more dangerous than this, the kit.
Any other questions, comments? I'd like to applaud you and staff for stepping forward with this, probably the first facility of this type to offer this and make it available to everyone who's in our custody.
Thank you.
And thank you for that leadership.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to, thank you, I have a motion in a second to adopt this program? Any comments afterwards? Let's vote electronically, Mrs. Porter, please call the role.
Yes.
James Johnson.
Yes.
Back out.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, Mrs. Garner, appreciate it.
Thank you.
By the way, on that, the policies and procedures, how long do you think that's going to take to finish before you actually kick this off?
I'd say within two weeks.
Okay, good.
We'll use.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Is there going to be a logistical system to keep up, like, hey, we walk around, like, are they going to be numbered in some sort so you can see if one's used or not? I mean, like you said, because you want them to use it, but you also want to be able to track, like, hey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that'll be part of our policies and procedures. I think it's going to be really difficult to keep up with, but it's something that when they're doing their cell inspections and random searches, it's something that is going to be on the checklist to confirm whether or not it's in place. So we may not catch it after they use it, but the hope is that we can grant them some sort of amnesty so they understand that you're not going to get in trouble for telling us that you've done this, but we want to ensure that you live to see another day. And so, I mean, it, it's going to be difficult to track, but we'll do the best that we can with our policies and procedures.
Thank you so much for leading on this project, and I thank fellow trustees for voting in the affirmative. Let's move on to item number nine, I'm sorry, item number eight. Didn't mean to skip you, Mr. Speaker, a report from Criminal Justice Authority. Yeah, Chris Steele.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a relatively short report as well. I do want to say congratulations to the Detention Center for their new hires. I'm a huge fan of Chris Sherman, and I also just had the opportunity to meet Michelle Gossit, and I think they're both tremendous additions, it's just incredible. Also want to say Superintendent Johnson, congratulations on your appointment to the trust, you are a value add, and your leadership continues, so it's great to see you here as well. Mr. Chair and members of the board, I would just want to say that very quickly, where we're at as far as the Citizens Advisory Board, we have been very diligent and steady in collecting input and data from members of our community as well as individuals who reside in the Detention Center to try to identify ways to improve. With the leadership of our Vice Chair, Aaron Engelke, who is also here this morning, and the other members of the Citizens Advisory Board, we are in the process and expect to have official recommendations to the jail trust for consideration of implementation by the end of the year. We're in the process of poring over all the input that we've been collecting now for nearly two years, and, and coming up with themes, and we're taking that input directly from everyone. We've, we've reached out to Mr. Washington, to Jody, to Chris, Sean, Mark, and all the advocates in our community, activists within our community who are very interested in making sure that the quality of life and all the progress that we're seeing take place continues. And so, just to let you know, where we're at in the process, we're going to use these final months of 2023 to solidify our official recommendations and present those to you for consideration, based on all the input that we're receiving, and we're inviting the entire community to join us in the process of pouring through and, and solidifying the data that we, that we have collected. And so we're going to be using the months of October, November, and December for that process. I would also say that included in those recommendations will be the input from the staff that we've also been able to solicit through the survey that our subcommittee under Aaron's leadership and Pastor Douglas's leadership have distributed and collected the feedback from the staff, and the staff recommendations on what they feel like they would need to increase longevity and feel supported and continue on in elevating morale. So all of that input will be included in those official recommendations. At our last meeting, one of our jail trust members, Mr. Buck, had asked for us to notify the trust of when we do our focus groups inside the Detention Center, and the event that any of you would like to participate in those without violating the Quorum or the Open Meetings Act. And we're in communication and coordination with Director Gardner right now to establish our September meeting, looking at the calendar to try to not conflict with any other very important meetings that take place. It looks like that may be the last Thursday of this month, which will be September the 28th in the afternoon at 2:00. Maybe when we do our next set of focus groups, I will send an email out to confirm that, just as soon as that is solidified, in the event that any of you would like to participate in person in those, in those activities. We would love, love to have you, and we'll make, make it a priority to continue to communicate that moving forward. The last thing that I would say, Mr. Chair, maybe next to last thing to say, is that we're going to encourage the, the trust to follow through on making your appointments. If you have a vacant appointment to the Citizens Advisory Board, to please make that appointment to the board so that we can have a full board, a functioning board. We've, we've had some turnover within the trust, and that's created some, some turnover. You guys keep taking from our bench, and we love that because we have very talented people, but that leaves some holes to fill. So with your permission, I'm just going to send a very gentle reminder, maybe through email, to say, hey, you have an open appointment, and if you would, you know, consider who you would like to represent your interests on the Citizens Advisory Board, that would be very helpful to us in making sure that we fulfill our quorums and so on and so forth. And we've also had some turnover, and so we'll also communicate if you've taken the place of someone else, if you still want the person who has been appointed to be your appointment, just so that we're all consistent in that. We want to make sure that we're an extension of you all, and that we're representing you in the way that you would want to be represented, and so on and so forth. And then the final thing that I have is just the announcement that our next cab board meeting will be September the 13th at 9:30 a.m. in this room.
Mr. Speaker, when you send out a email, will you please CC Mrs. Garner so we internally are aware and appreciate the notice?
Yes.
Sometimes emails are not up to date, and something might fall through the crack.
I will do that.
I would appreciate that. Any, any questions or comments for Speaker Steele? If not, thank you for your report, thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Let me acknowledge James Johnson joining us. We had two open slots on this trust, now we're down to one, and Mr. Johnson comes to us via cab, and his extensive background in criminal justice, not only as a professor, but more importantly, a, an actual practitioner of what your staff does every day, 24 hours a day. Mr. Johnson, welcome to your board, or our board, the board, it's not our board, is it our board? It's a trust. Anything you'd like to say, any comments? We're honored to have you, honestly. Item nine, which is the announcement of our regularly scheduled meeting on October 2nd, please make your calendars noteworthy. We have three cases that we need to discuss in executive session pursuant to Oklahoma Statute 25307b4, and I'd entertain a motion to enter executive session. Thank you, motion and second, is there a vote? Yes, there will be a vote. Please vote electronically, Mrs. Porter, call the role.
Yes.
James Johnson.
Yes. Yes.
We will be back as soon as the lawyer finishes her speeches. Thank you.
We are reconvening from executive session and I need a motion and a second to reconvene.
Move, second.
Moved and segmented that we return from executive session to regular session. All in favor, vote electronically and we will, Mrs. Porter, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. That brings us to item number 20, which is the Milton EEOC charge. We need a motion on that action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we reject mediation.
Motion to reject mediation, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for both, we will vote, vote electronically, Mrs. Porter, please call the roll.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes, on item number 21, the Levy case, there is no action required. Item 22, the Sims case, there is need for action and a motion second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve to remove to federal court.
Motion to remove to federal court.
Second.
There is a second, Mrs. Porter, please call the roll and vote electronically.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that concludes our session and agenda. Any, any comments or suggestions for the good of the order? If not, we are going to have a motion to adjourn until October 2nd. Thank you, is there a second? Mrs. Porter, please call the roll, like, vote electronically.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Yes, and we are adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.